You're good to go.
All right. Thank you. Let's call our board meeting to order. It's a special board meeting on 12-18-23. And our first action item is to call this meeting to order. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Addie.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Arnie. Any discussion or additions? Oh, thank goodness. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on. All right, so we have our... Well, did I just do that for the call to order, or did I say that proved the agenda?
You did.
You said call to order.
Which was really weird.
You guys could have like stopped me.
We just sort of, I looked at you like, are you sure you want it?
Yeah.
I tried, but I was unmute.
But I'll move we approve the agenda.
Thank you so much. And let's just, Addie, you had already...
I will second that.
We'll do that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I figure that since you guys didn't say anything on call to order, there's nothing that we want to add. Motion carries. All right, now we're going into board discussion and to discuss the candidates and the interim superintendent. And I was able to watch a little bit of the videos. I was not able to watch the whole thing. Didn't, I've just returned and I'm a little off on time, time zones. So if you guys want to say anything about that, fill us in. That would be great. Kevin, you want to take over here?
Sure, I completed the reference checks. Both of them went great. It's just higher marks from both sides. And it's kind of a field where they're networked in and, and a lot of them actually know each other. And everyone's saying that they're impressed with where we're at on the candidates. With the feedback, Brian's came slightly higher because he's, he's got more experience as an interim. But other than that, it's, it's looking good for both candidates. If you have any questions for me.
And I just want to say thank you, Kevin, for doing that. And I appreciate the effort that goes into getting ahold of people to make them do it. And I, if I looked at their resumes, I would have said the same thing, that obviously the one has done some interim jobs and the other has not. I think I was impressed with both of them. Their answers were succinct and good. I think he went on a little longer than he needed to on a few of those questions, which was what some people do.
What some people do.
But overall, I think we will do well with either one.
Yeah, I agree. That was my only comment was that he did tend to expound on the subject more than we needed to be expounded to sometimes.
The other thing that came across is I think both of them are anticipating that they need to do some work with the local, with our current administration. Both of them seem to understand that, you know, this was a situation that came up and they need to figure out how to work with that. And both of them, I think, showed an intent that they want to meet with our current administrative staff and work with them and figure out where it's at. And I appreciate that understanding.
David, did you have any input you wanted to share?
Yeah, I, I apologize. I was not able to make the interview, but I did, I did watch the, the video of the interview. I actually, I had never, I had never seen the interview done that way where they were both there at the same time. So that was kind of interesting to watch. And, and actually kind of fun, I thought, just to counterpose a little bit. I don't know if I'll use that in my own work, but I, I, I had, I concur basically. I think, you know, both candidates really impressed me. I mean, obviously they're both very experienced superintendents. They have a wide range of skills that they would bring. I might just give a slight nod to Brian just because he's been in that interim role and, and maybe has that, you know, real life experience of what it's like to come into a short term in the middle of something where you don't have these established relationships. But I, I thought actually either individual would, would do a good job for us and I would feel comfortable moving forward with either candidate.
Has anyone else joined us? I can't see the whole screen.
Adrian was here, if I saw.
Okay.
Adrian and Diane are both on.
Okay, Adrian or Diane, did either one of you want to talk about the candidates and, or the interview?
I unfortunately did not make the meeting on Friday and I have not had a chance to review. So I apologize for that, but I definitely trust everything that I'm hearing and am confident in what everybody else is saying, so.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with David and Arnie. Both candidates seem to be pretty strong. I, I did think that
Ginger?
No. Ah, sorry, the other candidate's name, my apologies.
Was it Brian or Dave?
I keep thinking Brian or Brad, but Brian, I thought he was a bit stronger in terms of basically having the, the experience to prepare for and work with the board to hire a permanent superintendent. So I would, I would give him the nod on that.
All right.
Commuted, Arnie.
Oh, Arnie, do you want to say something?
Yeah, when we, when we called out and got these names from Krista Parent, who was filling in for him, did she have a druthers one way or the other? Was any indication, or were these just the top candidates she felt? Davin?
Um, I actually didn't meet with Krista Parent. That would be better directed at Kevin.
I think that was David and Kevin.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was the two of us, Arnie. I, I, I think, you know, when Kevin and I presented initially to the board, I, I think out of our meeting with Krista, I think we rated, Brian was rated slightly ahead.
Okay.
Ginger, I think that's how we presented it, but I think even Krista said that she felt really good about both individuals and their ability to fill in.
Okay.
Does that sound right, Kevin?
Correct, yep. Okay, so the only thing that I felt about Brian was that he kept trying to school me and wants to school me through this whole process. And I don't know how much schooling I need to go through it. So that was my only concern. He was a little bit more heavy-handed in his responses.
I think that was a fair statement.
And I must have skipped through that part. I, I didn't, I did not see that. I did watch the video and he pontificated a little long, so I, I'm not very patient. So I just have to push forward to the next question. Plus, I didn't have a lot of time. But I did, I'm gonna have to say, I leaned towards him. He had fluidity and ease and professionalism in his answers. It seemed very, I don't know, that he was very well prepared. I liked his answer around leadership and connecting with leadership first thing and, you know, sitting down with folks and asking them questions. Ginger seemed really great too, but I would say my skill was tipped toward Brian from what I saw.
Addie, I would say for myself, I have tendencies maybe in the same direction, so maybe I didn't even pick up on that.
Okay, so we've got, we've had discussions. Do we have any other discussion before we move to our action items?
I was just curious if anybody had kind of talked with them about their ability to be in the district or what that would look like?
Actually, both of them answered that. He said, yeah, he said he would be here in his written deal four days a week or so. And she said that she was looking at getting a rental or some other deal to be down here some, for three, three or four days a week as well. So it sounded like both of them understood that they needed to be here.
Here, yeah.
Gotcha. And as you bring it up, I do recall that with Ginger. I just, I must have missed that in Brian's written, so thank you, Arnie.
Yep.
Yeah, it was in his cover letter.
Yep.
I feel comfortable with either.
So in our action items, we have to take action on this and pick one, right? And then we all, we also need to let our current person go out and start getting recruiting for a search team, right?
That sounds like what we're doing, yep.
Okay.
So we're, go ahead, Addie.
Well, um, okay, I think I misunderstood. Arnie, what did you say the course of events was going to be? We're going to pick someone today and that person's going to start the interim.
Not necessarily, no. What we were going to do is, is give permission for them to start going after a search committee. So we get some, some, some feedback from groups that are out there. So we can get that going as soon as possible.
Okay.
Can I, can I clarify? I mean, my, my understanding is we want to take several actions potentially today. One, one is which to appoint an interim superintendent pending a fully executed contract. Because obviously, we can, we can say who we would like, but until there's a contract in place, then we will have informal to vote on. So that's, my understanding is one action we want to take potentially, right? And, and maybe we, we vote for who our top choice is, and then that gives a, a direction about approving that pending a fully executed contract. But then my understanding is that we want to direct our acting superintendent to begin helping us in terms of the, the search firms. And at the same time, support, form our committee here to help select from that committee, present something to the full board.
Right, yeah, as, as written into the agenda, there are three action items. And the first action item is to consider appointing an interim superintendent pending a fully executed contract. So consider appointing. So then that would be, if we're going to consider it, are, are we considering it? So is that the motion you want us to go with, Davin?
I would think the motion would be to appoint an interim superintendent.
Yeah.
Pending a fully executed contract. So if I were to make a motion, for instance, or let me say I will.
Okay.
I make a motion that, that we appoint Brian Gardner as our interim superintendent pending a fully executed contract.
Thank you, David. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any discussion? No? Arnie, I see your lips moving.
Yeah, the, the only thing I was going to say is do we also, are, are the same two people who started this whole process, are they going to work with our attorney to current, work out a contract?
We could add that, Arnie, to the motion that, that Kevin and I will, will work with our council to, to execute a, a contract for the board's consideration.
That's far of a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that addition. All right, is there any other discussion before we go for a vote? Hearing none, let's vote. Arnie?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Addie?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, so motion carries. Thank you. Now moving on to our second action item, it says form a subcommittee to solicit, vet and provide a recommendation to the full board on a superintendent search firm to hire. So do I have a motion for that?
Maybe we could talk about who, who we would like to be on the, on the committee. And then we can use those names as one to move forward with. I, I assume we're looking at potentially two or three board members, right? We need under a quorum.
Yeah.
And, and I assume that the, the group might want to also include some of the other, you know, district input as well, I would assume.
I have a question. Just so I'm understanding, we're forming a committee to choose what firm we're going through?
It looks like we're just looking for the firm to hire, the superintendent search firm.
So my understanding from what I've been reading is that we need to solicit different committees, different one of, of search committees to give us a proposal on what it would cost us for them to run the deal. And then to select from that group of people who give us a proposal of search firm to do it. Since we know that right now OSBA is in a little bit of a turmoil, that doesn't seem to work. And the person that we had before is no longer there. So the issue is there are other great firms out there. And I, I know we can get some help with our interim superintendent to get us in touch with those people and to request proposals. And then after the proposals are requested, we need a committee to go through those and kind of tell us which one they think would be the best to have. That's my understanding. And I think Kevin and David have done such a great job. We wouldn't want to get in the way of them.
Yeah, I agree.
So historically, is that what we did before, is
We went with
need to go over the different proposals?
We did. We went with OSBA, but yes.
We had, we had, we had two firms that, that, that put forward solicitations that upon, that put forward proposals based on our solicitation. And we had a committee that came and made a, made a recommendation out of those two. And then the board acted on, on that after that they heard the, the evaluation and recommendation.
Okay, I was just, okay.
Mr. Navatney, I saw your hand up as well, so.
Thank you. Chair Brick, I was just going to chime in. I think Arnie has explained everything appropriately. It is fairly traditional for school boards to appoint a subcommittee of board members to go ahead and solicit those proposals from executive search firms to review those and make a recommendation on which firm to hire to the full board. And if you have a board of seven individuals, I think it might be wise to consider three board members on the subcommittee. So you have a tiebreaker if it's necessary. And I do agree with you, Kevin and David have done a really an excellent job. And if they're willing to continue to serve on that subcommittee, I think that's, that's excellent.
So Kim, Adrian or Diane, do you have a preference or, or Addie as to whether you are the fourth, the third person?
Not it.
I'm, I'm willing to serve on that committee.
I think that's great.
And so am I, so either one of us.
All right, so let's, do we have, do we need to vote on this, Davin? Have a motion to put?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, so let's, let's, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we nominate David, Kevin and Adrian to serve on the superintendent search committee. Their first job being bringing back to the board a search firm to use in that process.
Thank you, Addie. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, as long as we understand that they're going to go through both Ms. Dave Navatney and our attorneys to come up with how we solicit those.
Perfect, thank you, Arnie. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and go for a vote. Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Addie?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Arnie?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion carries. It looks like we have our last action item, which is direct the acting superintendent to reach out to various superintendent search firms to solicit proposals.
Yep.
So do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is that motion even necessary, given what we just did?
I think it is helpful. I think it helps the team to know that they have given, been, been given permission from the entire board to go solicit.
Okay.
So I will make the motion to have them solicit the
Right.
Firms.
Thank you, Arnie, and thank you, Addie, for that second. I'm sure Mr. Navatney appreciates that as the acting superintendent right now. So let's, any discussion?
I, I would just say, you know, obviously to David, you know, to reach out to the folks on the solicitation committee for any help or any, you know, work that needs to be done. And again, I, I'm not sure whether counsel just about what the appropriate process to make sure we're following a regular solicitation process. I know we're trying to be expeditious just because we're a little bit behind where we would normally want to be in the hiring process. So I appreciate the efforts to try to, to try to move us forward and getting us on track where we can be competitive during this process.
Absolutely. Chair Brick, after the vote, then I would like to ask the board for a little bit of direction, but that will be after the vote.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote for a vote. Arnie?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Addie?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Adrian? I vote aye as well, so motion carries. And that is it for our action items, and we would like to allow the floor to Mr. Navatney.
Thank you. So Chair Brick and members of the board, I've identified nine executive search firms to send email out soliciting proposals from those companies. To be clear, in my former position as superintendent of the Lamont ESD, in my interim superintendent position for Newburgh School District, we used this exact same process. And David, to your point earlier, I reviewed this process with legal counsel and it was approved. The nine firms that I'm going to reach out to would be the Oregon School Boards Association. To be clear, you've used OSBA in the past. At this point in time, it's a little unclear who is conducting the superintendent searches for OSBA. They are in a different position than they were last time that you engaged with them. But they should still at least receive an email and have the opportunity to submit a proposal. Another company is called Breakthrough Consulting LLC. It is Dr. Rob Hess. He was the former superintendent of the Lebanon School District. He now works in Eugene 4J and he does consulting and some superintendent searches in the state of Oregon. It is a small company. I was going to send an email to Krista Parent of COSA. As you know, Krista is the deputy executive director of leadership. And I'm not sure, at one time COSA and Human Capital Enterprises were doing some of these searches. I'm not sure what their status is, but I'm going to ask Krista to use her professional network and forward it out to anyone that she knows that's currently doing superintendent searches as well. Another organization is called Coaching to the Next Level, Dr. Chris Wetzel. They are out of Denver, Colorado, but they actually reached out to Vice Chair Dubusar and asked to receive a proposal. So we'll go ahead and send an email to that group as well. There is also McPherson and Jacobson LLC. They are a large national executive search firm. I know that Coos Bay considered using them in the past, the distant past. Doug Nelson, who is the former superintendent for the Ben Lepine School District, traditionally does the superintendent searches in Oregon if they're awarded a, a contract to do that type of search. We have Dr. Dennis Ray. His firm is called Northwest Leadership Associates. They are a large company. They do a number of searches in Oregon and Washington, but primarily the state of Washington. They probably do the majority of the superintendent searches in that particular state. Point North is an emerging company out of Vancouver, Washington. They're communications and they're starting to do executive searches as well. Point North has the communication contract for the I-5 Bridge project. And they have a small subdivision of that company that does executive searches led by Jana Ruplee, who is the former superintendent of the Clackamas Education Service District. One of the larger companies is Human Capital Enterprises. Hank Harris is the former HR director for Portland Public Schools. And I think for the last 10 years, they've been doing superintendent searches primarily in the Northwest and they're highly regarded. And then we have Window to Leadership or Nixed Up Leadership. That is Greg McKenzie and Milt Dennison, and they do superintendent searches. So that's nine, and that group could expand if Krista has additional people. And invariably, there will be individuals that will reach out asking if they can submit proposals as well. So that should be a pretty robust group of potential firms that might want to engage with a Coos Bay School District. So having said that, the direction that I need from this board is do you want to conduct a national search for your next superintendent? Or do you want to have the search firm conduct more of a regional, like Pacific Northwest type of search? It's an important decision for a couple of reasons. First, a national search, you may bring in someone potentially from East Coast. And when they come to Coos Bay, it may be difficult for them to understand the community, the Oregon education system, those different type of things. It's more expensive to conduct a national search and you have to engage with different type of firms if you're going to conduct a national search. Most of the school districts in Oregon conduct more of a regional, a Pacific Northwest type of search. And any of the organizations that we have identified would be inappropriate for regional search. So I just needed a little bit of direction from this group as far as what your expectations are, because that's really one of the first questions I'm going to receive from any of these search firms.
I'll just speak for myself. I think regional is the way to go. Even last time, we got some California applicants, but I think after they figured out where we were and who we were, they were not necessarily interested. So I think it's better if people have a little bit of an understanding of where we are, who we are and all that stuff. So I, I tend to be regional.
Thank you.
Acting Superintendent Navatney, I, I have to say that I've been very impressed with just even your updates. Being out of the loop so long, it's been helpful for me. And then this was, I thought we'd have maybe two, two groups to choose from. I was thinking, oh, Kevin and David and Adrian are getting off easy. That's the easy part. They'll just have one or two firms to choose from. So this is really nice to have so many. I agree with Arnie that a regional search is probably the best way to go. We have had and we know here in this region that we've had teachers and doctors and, and anybody else in a profession that gets off the plane, they see our area and they get back on the plane and, and leave. So regional, I mean, we got to start there.
Sounds good.
And as, as the transplant who moved here from the East Coast, I find it very nice and would not go back. So my preference would be to do a national search. Having heard what you went through last time where you got so few candidates and we're looking to do this fast, we need to get candidates. I'd hate to leave it to the point where we're, you know, doing this with one or two people again. As good as they could be, I think we need a bigger pool to pick from.
I understand that, I mean, that's exactly what I was thinking at first. But I don't know how many search firms we had, I mean, other than the two that maybe were whittled down. I didn't seem like we had nine to start with, but maybe we did. With this many at least to look into regionally, and I, I think it's a good place to start, is to get your regional folks. But again, that's just me, and I'd like to hear from some others about their thinking. Diane, actually, you raised your hand.
Yeah, is it possible, Dave, if we start regionally and we notice we are not getting heavy traffic or a lot of resumes? Can the search later be expanded or a contract amended? Or is it we're kind of stuck with what we've additionally or what we signed on to?
No, I think that really is a great question. And that doesn't happen very often, but it is entirely possible. So you can start regionally and then expand if you're not satisfied with the candidate pool. And I know that getting the right superintendent in your community is a really, really critical decision for this board. So if you have to lengthen out the recruitment timeline. So if you have to lengthen out the um, recruitment timeline, then that would be the right way to go. And that's, that's entirely possible.
I, I will say we've had um, good experience with national searches. Um, our superintendent, um, one came from Texas, one came from Utah, um, both of whom did really well here. Um, so I, I understand that feeling as well. I, I just worry about when you go to a, if you start out that way, the timelines, is it gonna make it harder for us to get something done in the time we have? I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
It certainly can.
Adrian, uh, I'm gonna recognize you.
But you're on mute, so it's hard.
Oh, how about that?
There you go.
Um, I was gonna let you know, Addie, we did have more than two candidates apply during our last round. Uh, we had, if I remember, it was like eight to 10 applicants. And we'd whittled that down to a shortlist, and I think one or two of those people, um, when we offered them a chance to come interview, declined the position. And so then we were left with two finalists to, to pick from. That's kind of how that process went. Um, I um, remember, I can't remember the name of the firm that we used before, we used OSBA for our last search. Next Up Leadership, sounds very familiar, uh, Mr. McKenzie. I know I've spoken to him at some point.
Yes.
Um, and I know that this, the firms will, if they don't find a lot of candidates regionally, can expand out a little ways farther without too much trouble to do a national search, uh, becomes a little bit problematic with that. Um, but you, you know, even our, our last go around, we had a decent number of candidates apply.
I, I would say, um, you know, we can certainly ask those questions in a part of our evaluation process and try to identify uh, firms that have an ability to be nimble in that area and maybe recruit from a larger pool if they're not getting the applicants. Um, I, I think we can certainly include that, Addie, as a part of our evaluation process.
Yeah, I like that.
Um, I, I do think uh, last time, uh, OSBA applied, and I think it was uh, Mr. Harris' group also, put for a proposal. And I believe we only had two firms that were interested last time to choose from. So um, that may also help us sort of narrow things down when it comes down to actually, you know.
Getting a response.
It is a mixed bag. I mean, I, I think, you know, if we can find somebody regional, the chances of sort of success, of people choosing and wanting to come is probably higher than remote. But yes, you, you, and if you do national, you, you end up, there's a lot more time expended on evaluations and research of candidates that probably won't pan out. Um, and so, I mean, it's a, it's, it's trying to find that sweet spot a little bit. Um, so, but I, I hear what you're saying, Addie, too. I mean, and, and sometimes you have certain parts of the country where there are, they're not maybe paying as well, or the educational system is in some kind of crisis. And, and maybe you recruit more from those areas that are particularly sort of vulnerable that are looking for, but it's really hard to, to figure that out ahead of time.
And Chair Brick?
Yes.
May I make a comment? I was just gonna comment about regional versus national. I think uh, probably the most important point that I would like to be able to impart with all of the superintendent search firms is to be actively recruiting superintendent candidates. I firmly believe that a superintendent or executive search firm, that they need to actually make contact with qualified individuals to see if they might be interested in coming to Kuz Bay, which is an exceptional community. And so regional versus national isn't as important as how aggressive and how personalized their recruitment strategies are. And with your permission, I would like to be able to share that information with the superintendent search firms.
Yes.
Yes, that sounds wonderful, Mr. Navatney. All right, is there any other discussion or last minute thoughts before we adjourn our meeting?
I, I did wanna um, express my appreciation for your updates as well, um, Mr. Navatney. And uh, in general, being on top of all of this, uh, it's been very impressive from my perspective. And I don't know how many times we're gonna get to tell you that as time goes on, but um, you, you have done an amazing job. Uh, and I have heard from community members as well, uh, and staff around about how um, you have done this job, so thank you.
Thank you, really my pleasure.
And then, oh, then, then before we go, I think um, your, your original question was whether we should do a, a regional or national type search. And my preference for that would be for regional as well.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, we have consensus with that?
Yep.
Yeah, it sounds like we do, so please move forward with that. And um, just so we're on the record, I do want to say thank you, Kevin, for uh, chairing the meetings for the last three weeks. I don't know how many meetings you must have had, but thank you for doing that. You did an excellent job from what I've seen and heard. Um, a lot of work has been going on, so thank you all for the work that you've done over the last few weeks. And it looks like we've got a good jump on some uh, promising avenues. And everyone, happy holidays. And with that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Guys, bye, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.